Good morning, everyone, and welcome, and happy new year. This time I call the Paulding County Work Session, Board Commissioners Work Session for January the 9th, 2024 to order.
And so delighted to have, let's see, I want to not recognize some elected. I don't see anyone. I see some prior elected. So it's good to have David Austin in the house with us. So glad to have Tommy Biggs, who will come and bring us our invocation and also lead us in the pledge. Stand if you're able.
Our most gracious and heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you today humbly before you, thanking you, Lord, for the many blessings that we have received through the past years and through this, we're hoping up through this upcoming year. Lord, we pray that you will be with these commissioners as they do the will of the county and look out for the citizens of Paulding County. Lord, we pray that you'll also be with those South Georgia and in Florida that have dealt with storms and are dealing with the aftermath of those storms at this time. Lord, we pray that you will be with all our public safety, all our first responders. Lord, we send extra prayers for those who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Lord, we pray that you will just continue to bless this county, this state, and this country, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Sergeant Biggs, for getting us started off correctly. Is there anybody on the list there running? Okay, you can bring it forward anyway. If you've got a phone or anything on, a good time to turn it off. The minutes for December 12th, 2023, the work session minutes for that date, December 12th, and the board meeting minutes are available for review. Under announcements this morning, we're happy to recognize the employee of the month, Marcy Fiero, and I'm assuming we've got a video on this occasion.
Well, Marcy's actually the coordinator for community development. She looks after and takes care of all the different divisions and pitches in and helps with all of us. She does a great job. She takes care of the Paulding County citizens. She takes her complaints very serious. She gets it to the people so people get where they need to be so we can take care of the issues that they have. But she also takes care of a lot of stuff if we need supplies or continuing education or lining up for the inspectors to get classes, to get their certifications and all that. She just goes the extra mile. She's so nice to have around. She really makes my job a lot easier by what she does. Probably one of the best employees that I've seen. I've been here a long time and a lot of them come and go, but Marcy goes the extra mile. She's always bubbly, always ready to roll her sleeves up and take on any task to help anybody that needs help. I appreciate you.
And you should have brought her in here. She's probably seen that already, huh? I love that. So today's kind of special because it's the first meeting of 2024, and our invited guests are really some of our special staff. And it's kind of become our kickoff practice, if you will, for the new year to review three important and foundational principles. That is our mission, our vision, and our values. So what we've done this morning as a board is to ask some of our special staff to read these to us and for us all to internalize what these values mean to us. So we'll start out with Community Development Assistant Director Chris Robinson, and he's going to read the Board of Commissioners' mission statement. Thank you, Chris.
Good morning. Everybody hear me okay? It's an honor and privilege to be here this morning, and thank you, Board of Commissioners. And we'll start off with the mission. Paulding County Board of Commissioners' mission with unity and purpose, work to enhance citizens' quality of life by maximizing resources to make Paulding County a better place to live, work, and play.
Thank you, Chris. And Finance Department Assistant Director April Myers will read the Board of Commissioners' vision statement. Thank you, April.
Good morning. Paulding County Board of Commissioners will operate as an effective, efficient governing body on behalf of all the citizens of Paulding County to make Paulding County the preeminent place in the Atlanta metro area to live, work, and play.
Thanks so much. And I see Alex already coming up. Recreation Department Assistant Director is Alex Wilson, and he's going to read the Board of Commissioners' value statement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Paulding County, Georgia, is a community that is unique in the Atlanta metropolitan area in its opportunities, diverse citizenry, and recreational programs, but most of all in its heart. The Paulding County Board of Commissioners will honor these values, honesty, equality, and openness in government, excellence in working with all levels of government, and supporting citizen involvement, accountability in order to ensure financial and personal integrity, respect within the county government and to our citizens, teamwork and transparency in order to promote quality decision-making.
Thank you, Alex. Thank all of y'all for taking part in that. I think it's more special to us on the board to link up and realize that we have to work together to get these three principles put into action. Okay, no bid awards this morning. Report from committees and departments. So glad to have Paulding County Extension Coordinator Mary Carol Sheffield with us to update us on the Extension Department. Thanks, Mary Carol.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So as always, we are super grateful for your support each year. I'm excited to report on our successful year of programming in 2023. We continue to be one of the largest 4-H programs in the state of Georgia. We serve more than 2,300 4-Hers from fifth grade all the way through 12th grade, the bulk of those being fifth graders because we have a fifth grade club meeting in every classroom at every school every month. So that's something we're super proud of. We also had a great improvement in participation in our district public speaking contest and our county public speaking contest for fifth and sixth graders. Back to 2020, things kind of dropped off. You couldn't do as much, so we've been rebuilding ever since. And last year was a really good year. We had about 90 students compete in public speaking. We're on tap to do that again later this month for this year, and we're already up to 150 registrants for that, so we're super excited about that. We were able to provide training for farmers this year through the Journeyman Farmer Program, and we did the small ruminate production program, and we'll do that again this year for small fruit and vegetable production. We also did a master naturalist training in conjunction with Carroll and Douglas Counties, and we trained several master naturalists about natural resources issues in our region. And Paulding County is particularly important in that realm, as you all know. So that was a great opportunity to engage some local advocates for our natural resources. We had one of our 4-Hers go to the state public speaking contest in Atlanta in July. She placed second in her programming area. We're super proud of her, and we're excited that she'll probably get to go back this year. You know, they usually work their way up that ladder from second, so maybe she'll be first this year. We're super excited about that. And we've just had a phenomenal year, and I'm excited to be able to tell you about it. So thank you for having me here this morning.
Thanks, Mary Carol. No one has signed up for public participation on the agenda items. Under the consent agenda, item number two is to authorize the chairman to enter into a supplemental agreement with Kelly Landscape Management to renew the fiscal year 2024 roadway right-of-way turf maintenance services contract in the amount of $199,422.64. The contract provides for finish mowing, string trimming, edging, and litter pickup for approximately 64.7 acres of turf maintenance shoulders during the growing season and then litter pickup on the 64.7 acres during the non-growing season. It also provides up to an additional 40 shoulder miles of litter pickup on various county roads during the non-growing season. Funding for the renewal of this contract will be allocated from the general funds. You know, somebody that knows a lot about highways and everything is our pro-tem, so I'm going to surprise him and just ask him. Ask Brian if he'll tell us what string trimming is.
String?
Right here in the wording, string trimming.
Weed eating?
I don't know.
I'm assuming it is weed.
Using a string trimmer to weed.
Okay. You can get help from the staff if you need.
I'm gonna go with weed eating, but yours should be an engineer may think it's something else.
Yeah, that's what that little string's all about, right?
String trimming.
They won't preclude them from using a blade if they want, but I like the term string trimming.
All right, this kind of got my attention. I thought it swore some explanation. Well, Consent Agenda Item Three is to authorize the chairman to enter into Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement with Cobb County for the burnt hickory road stout parkway in the Brownsville Extension Intersection Improvement Project. This project's located in post three, and I'm sure this lady on my left is excited about it. So that's Agenda Item Three. Agenda Item Four is to adopt tax assessor's job classification for commercial property manager, personal property manager, residential property manager, and commercial property appraiser. Item Five is to confirm the proposed 2024 transfer station designated holiday schedule. Number Six is to authorize the county manager to sign all documents necessary for accepting sub grant number N as in November 50-8-067 to the amount of $3,750 for the purchase of Na-Loxone, which is Narcan, for the sheriff's office. Item Seven is to authorize the county manager to sign all documents necessary for accepting sub grant number C23-8-101 on behalf of the Commissioners and the Paulding Judicial Circuit for assistance with victims' services. Item Eight is to approve the renewal of the contract services agreement with FL Graphics for a Paulding County kiosk program for a period of one year. The next 13 agenda items, consent agenda items, deal with nominations that the board makes. Board of Commissioners has been involved with recruiting and finding the right people for several of these boards, and then the appointments would occur if passed at the 2:00 meeting today. So the way we're going to do this is to start with post one on your left, and then we'll just come down the line. We'll let our county attorney and county manager sit this one out, and our board will read to you the people and the names that we have thought of and actually made phone calls to and tried to recruit for, I think, 18 very important boards. So you got it there, Commissioner Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Consent Agenda Item Number Nine will be the appointment of the Animal Control Board appointments with a term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Jason Flat is the chairman's appointment. Jessica Gullet is the post one appointment. Jennifer Farrell is the post two appointment. Charles Spann is the post three appointment, and Suzanne Baker is the post four appointment.
Cemetery Preservation Board appointments with the term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Chairman's appointment is Todd Tibbetts. Post one appointment, Vince De Seko. Post two, Mark Long. Post three, Nancy Hollingshed. And post four, Brian Cochran.
And the fire advisory appointments with the term January 9th, today, 2024 through December 31st, 2024 are the chairman's appointment is Dan Osment. Post one appointment is Matt Mason. Post two appointment is Randy Richards. Post three appointment is Frankie Willingham, and post four appointment is Chris Wheeler.
The Keep Paulding Beautiful Commission appointments with the term of January 9th, I mean, January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2026, so a two-year term. Post one appointment is Judd Sewell and Gary Goswick. Post two is John Grant. Post three is Bob Banks and Amy Shide. Post four, Brittany Haygood and Ashley Hatcher. At-large members are Leo Parker and Kristen Thomas, and UGA Extension Representative is Mary Carol Sheffield.
Planning Commission appointments with a term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. The chairman's appointment, Jacob Wicks. Post one, James Steele. Post two, Alice Aston. Post three, Roger Leggett. And post four, Jody Palmer.
Item 14 will be to appoint Jeff Knowles to fill the unexpired term of Jeff Hutton on the Industrial Building Authority with a term ending on December 31st, 2024.
Reappoint Jeffrey Tharp, M.D., to the Paulding County Health Board with the term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2029.
Item 16 is to reappoint David Austin to the Northwest Georgia Regional Board with a term January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2029.
Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals appointments with the term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Art Ragsdale, James Steele, Ken Ellsbury, Jamie Cochran.
Reappoint Don Benson, Michelle Boatwright, and Michelle Craig to the Region One Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council with a term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024.
Item 19 will be to appoint Michelle Craig to fill the unexpired term of David Fitzpatrick on the Paulding County Department of Family and Children Services Board with a term ending December 31st, 2028, and to reappoint Lieutenant Brian Smith with a term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2028.
Item 20, Zoning Board of Appeals appointments with the term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. Lamar Clark is the chairman's appointment. Dave Roberts, post one appointment. Jack Hart, post two appointment. Robert Owens, post three appointment. And Jerry Johnson, post four appointment.
And item 21 is the Water and Sewer Advisory Board appointments with a term January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, one-year term. I get three nominations, which is Robert Owens, Bobby Maddox, and David Barnett. Post one is Justin Fuller. Post two is Michael Creighton. Post three is Jim Smith, and post four is Wayne Kirby. Thank y'all for helping out on that, and we're excited about the new boards, and they're certainly citizens who help us get things done and weigh in with their wisdom and understanding and dedication to this county. So we're still in the consent agenda part, and item 22 is to accept the following streets listed for perpetual maintenance by the county. The Riverwood Unit Two, Phase Two, which includes Dewdrop Lane, Dewdrop Point, and Rushing View Glen, and the Macklin Township, Phase Two, which is the Monaghan Way. Is there any of the Commissioners that would like to move any of these items to regular business? Hearing none, we'll keep them where they are, consent agenda. No old business this morning. Under new business, item 23 is to discuss action to authorize the purchase of approximately 1,246 stream credits for an estimated price of $99,680. And this is for the Harmony Grove Church Road Extension Project. The funding will be allocated from SPOSH, Special Purpose Local Options Sales Tax, located in post one. Mr. George Jones to bring us word on it.
Morning.
Morning.
As y'all know, Harmony Grove Church Road is a two-lane undivided road. The south end of the road currently terminates at Cedar Crest Road. The north, I guess you'd call it the northwest approach, the intersection is essentially a, was a private driveway right now. The property that was there was abandoned. In an effort to provide additional connectivity to the new, under construction, crossroads middle school located off Seven Hills Connector, the board has approved constructing a new roadway going from the fourth leg of this traffic signal to the middle school property. At this time, the roadway plans are being finalized, and the right-of-way acquisition phase is underway. As the design plans have developed, a stream has been identified which will be impacted by the construction of the roadway project. This impact will require the county to purchase stream mitigation credits. At this time, a total of 1,245 credits are estimated to be required. The credits cost $80 apiece, so for the 1,245 credits, the cost would be $99,600, and that bank is from the Ustinalla River Wetland and Stream Mitigation Bank where those will be acquired from. And I forgot to say, this project overall will be in post one.
Any questions? Comments?
This stream credit, this is a federal requirement, and I take it.
It is. When you have these type of projects that impact streams, the Army Corps of Engineers looks at it through the Clean Water Act, and you essentially have to provide, since you're impacting a certain stream, you have to provide a mitigation. And obviously, the way stream bank mitigation credits work, I'm definitely not an expert. It's tough to explain, but you have to buy essentially the mitigation, basically just try to take care of another area essentially, you know, keep it preserved while you're developing this area. And like the further way that you buy credits, the more credits you need. It's a very interesting formula. The closer you are, the less credits you need. But the problem with stream bank mitigation credits in Georgia, particularly with all the development, a lot of them are already, they're essentially being utilized or, you know, they're reserved for other projects. So if I'm going to start my next business, I'm going to buy some wetlands and, you know, become a wetland credit bank manager and retire.
Seems like a long time since we bought any stream credits.
Yeah, it's been a couple of years on the DOT side, but yeah. Obviously, if you try to avoid stream mitigate, you know, impacting streams at all possible, in some cases, you just simply can't.
Item 24, new business also, Mr. Jones, is discuss action to approve the contract with Bremen Jones Engineering Associates, LLC, in the amount not to exceed $381,579 for the design and bidding of the Mount Tabor to Cadillac Pump Station Outfall from the Renewal and Extension Fund located in post one and three. And you don't look like Mr. Jones.
He's a lot better looking than I am, but what we're trying to do in the water system is we're trying to build redundancy in our systems. One of the issues we have right now in our Copper Mine Basin is over 90% of the flow goes to one station on the very east side of Hiram. That pump station and Forest Main go through about 18,000, a little over 18,000 feet of parking lots, buildings, et cetera, to where if there's ever a problem on the Forest Main, there's a chance that we're exposing the public to all the flows that are out there. So we got together with Brendan Jones and Garver and a few other folks, looking at a way to build redundancy into the system, and have come up with a realignment to take flow off of rake straw and move over 40% of the flow to our Cadillac pump station. As part of this layout, it's in three phases, of which we've presented three maps, and it's about 13,800 feet of relocated 20-inch sewer that we're looking to install. But Brendan Jones has been working with us, trying to get this done in time before, on the first two phases, before the third phase is complete, which is being done by a different group. And we are looking to have Brendan Jones, they've submitted a price of $381,579 to complete the design of the project all the way through bidding, and we would like to execute a contract with them to get those first two phases complete in time for the completion of the third phase.
Guess you're good. Thanks, Ray Woodin.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your report. Item 25 is to discuss action to adopt Resolution 24-01, establishing the qualifying fees for local offices and authorizing the publication of the same. Ms. Pollard and our county attorney, Mr. Phillips, you going to take it?
Yeah, I'll take this one. Commissioners, when there are county elections, which we're in a county elections year, one of the duties of the county governing authority is to establish qualifying fees in January, and those fees, there's a formula which is set by state law. It's typically 3% of a base salary or 3% of the base salary plus supplements. You can see in the chart, those are the proposed qualifying fees based on that statutory formula. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. Does that, like, we're doing a salary study, and if we change that, would that change the qualifying fees?
However the base salary is determined, will determine what that fee is. So if there's a salary study that for some reason impacts an elected office, then perhaps, but many of the elected office amounts are set by local legislation and state law.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
I can respond a little bit to that. I know our HR director's here also, and Finance Director. The salary study that we're currently looking at is, they're all non-elected positions. They're all just county positions, so. And I concur with what Jason had said about, they're in statute, and they're set by statute too, so. But that's a good question, though, Commissioner.
Item 26 is to discuss action to confirm the Economic Development Board nominations with a term of January 9th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024. And the chairman's appointment there is Commissioner Keith Dunn, and the post commissioner's appointment is Commissioner Virginia Galloway. The full Board of Commissioners' appointments are Greg Perry and Ford Digpen. So I wasn't at the Friday agenda prep, but these... So I wasn't at the Friday agenda prep, but these, Frankie, you may comment just why these are on new business rather than the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They're on new business based on the fact that if they were on consent, the parties involved, which would be Commissioner Dunn, Commissioner Galloway, and also Commissioner Caker, would have to recuse themselves or abstain from voting because they have an interest in both of these, as either appointing or being appointed to. This one and 27.
All right. Going with 27, discuss action to approve the appointment of Steve Caker to the Keep Polton Beautiful Board with a term beginning January 9th, 2024 today through December 31st, 2024 as a representative for post two. She wouldn't vote for him anyway. So they'll be recusing themselves at two o'clock. Well, that's the conclusion of regular business. I thought since we always are so expeditious in these meetings, it's only 10:30 that we could go around the room and everyone could say what they got for Christmas. I'm glad Scott Green's, yeah, he's in here. He's the one that always tells me, Dave, don't try to be funny. So no one's signed up for non-agenda items this morning. So what we typically do to close is see if anybody has any special announcements, celebrations, or go down the panel. Yes, ma'am? Yes, of course.
Today is National Law Enforcement Day, so if you see one of our great law enforcement people out there, maybe buy them lunch or just tell them how much you appreciate them because they do a lot in this county for us.
I didn't know today was that day. Thank you. Others? Well, I'm excited about the new year. I've been told that I don't try for another year or divorce will be in the future. So if anybody asks you, you know the answer now, if you didn't already know. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Cakers. Are you second?
Second.
Second. By Commissioner Stover. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We carry 5-0, and we stand adjourned.